Everyone, welcome to the regular council meeting of Wednesday, December the 3rd, 2025. Let's begin with a moment of reflection and respect. Thank you. Item three, confirmation of agenda. We have a resolution?
That council adopts the agenda for the meeting of December 3rd, 2025, as amended with the following additions, and that the remaining items be renumbered accordingly. Item 7.8, Director of Infrastructure and Operations, report operations 25-25 tender award for the 2026 pavement management program, and bylaw 79-25 being a bylaw to authorize the signing of an agreement between the Town of Elmer and Associated Paving and Materials Limited for the 2026 pavement management program.
Mover and seconder, Deputy Mayor Barber and Consulor Ozlech. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Item four, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, item five, delegations and public meeting. We have a committee of adjustment. We have a resolution to go into committee of adjustment?
That council do recess and now commence a committee of adjustment meeting at 7:03 PM.
Mover and seconder, Consul Rahi and Consul DeRosie, all those in favor? Carrie, so, resolution?
So, the committee of adjustment of the Town of Elmer is convened to consider application for minor variance A07-25. Additional information relating to the applications is available for inspection between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM weekdays at Elmer Town Hall. Signed, written submissions are accepted by the Secretary Treasurer prior to or during the hearing, and such submissions shall be available for inspection by any interested party. If a party who is notified does not attend the meeting, the committee can proceed, and the party is not entitled to any further notice of hearings. Submission or request for notice can be sent to clerks at town.elmer.on.ca. A copy of the decision will be mailed to those persons who attend or are represented at the hearing, and those who have filed a written request with the Secretary for Notice of the committee's decision. The committee will receive input in the following order: first, presentation of the staff report by the manager of planning and development; then from the agent or applicant, the public, staff, and the clerk. Application 07-25 is made by Abraham Peters, the agent, on behalf of Jennifer Zoot, the owner of the property known municipally as 104 Aspen Parkway in the Town of Elmer. The purpose of this variance is to permit the construction of an attached covered unenclosed deck to be added to the rear of an existing single detached dwelling with zone deficiencies.
Thank you. Can we have the report on this item? Who's doing the report? Terry, thank you.
Thank you, worship through you. I'll keep the report brief, as this is a fairly standard application for minor variance. The minor variance is to seek relief for maximum projection into a rear yard and maximum lot coverage. This is for a proposed covered deck to be added to the existing single detached dwelling at 104 Aspen Parkway, which is in Phase Two of the Cottonwood subdivision. As you can see from figure two, if we can zoom into that for a second, the lot backs onto the existing stormwater pond for the subdivision, so there's no residences directly adjacent to the rear. This lot and surrounding uses are designated as low-density residential. The application was circulated to applicable town staff, agencies, and surrounding properties, and there were no comments or concerns received. The proposed minor variance passed the four tests of the Planning Act, and it's planning staff's opinion that the minor variance is appropriate, and that application A07-25 be approved, subject to no concerns being raised.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present here or online? No? I'm sorry, there's nobody online?
They are online.
No? Okay. Members of the public? I see no members of the public here. Good, have we had any other? Sorry, is there a?
The homeowner is online.
So, but, okay, go ahead and...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think they're probably online, just in case the committee has any questions.
Very well, then we shall move on, then. Have we received any communication?
We haven't received any further communication regarding this application.
Council, have any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, worship. It seems to be a pretty straightforward, basic minor variance application.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, then we will move out of committee of adjustment? Resolution?
That report Plan 22-25, Planning Evaluation Report, application for minor variance A07-25 regarding 104 Aspen Parkway be received, and that application for minor variance A07-25 seeking relief from the zoning bylaw as follows: one, that the maximum projection into the required rear yard for the proposed deck shall not exceed 2.93 meters or 9.61 feet, and that the rear yard depth shall be 4.57 meters or 14.99 feet, and that the maximum lot coverage shall not exceed 47% be approved.
Okay. We have a mover and a seconder on this? Consul Chapman and Consul Ozlech, have any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Now we have a resolution to adjourn the committee of adjustment?
That the committee of adjustment meeting does now close, and council reconvene at 7:08 PM.
Mover and seconder, Consul DeRosie and Consul Chapman, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Item six, consent agenda? Resolution?
That the December 3rd, 2025 consent agenda be received for information, and that the included recommendations within the staff reports be adopted, and that council approves the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on November 19th.
Mover and seconder, Deputy Mayor Barber, Consul Rahi. Any? Consul DeRosie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to point out item 6.3.5, which was the minutes for the EECC meeting. There was a recorded vote that was requested, and it is not reflected in the meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you. We'll see that that's corrected. Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor? And as Carrie, thank you. Item seven, action item 7.1, complex board memory operating capital, et cetera, resolution?
That the council of the Town of Elmer approve the 2026 EECC operational budget in the total amount of $644,752, or $322,376 per municipal partner, and that the council of the Town of Elmer approve the EECC roll forward of prior approved 2025 carryforward projects to 2026 at year end, and that the council of the Town of Elmer approve the 2026 EECC capital budget in the total amount of $1,177,467, or $588,733.50 per municipal partner, and that the council of the Town of Elmer approve the 2026 EECC user fees.
Right. You have a mover and seconder for this resolution? Consul Chapman and Deputy Mayor Barber, all right. Any questions? Any comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seven point, why not? As Carrie, thank you. Item 7.2, Manager of Parks and Recreation, resolution?
That report rec. 12-25, entitled Elmer Pool Lease and Services Agreement be received for information, and that council execute the agreement between the town and the YWCA St. Thomas Elgin for the pool seasons of June 1st to 2026 through September 30th, 2030.
Mover and seconder, Consul DeRosie, Consul Chapman. So, Susie?
Thank you, through your worship, to members of council. This report proposes a renewed pool lease and services agreement with the YWCA St. Thomas Elgin for the 2026 through 2030 pool seasons. The town has partnered with the YWCA for many years to deliver swimming lessons, leadership courses, and public swimming. The current agreement is outdated and doesn't provide predictable funding, especially as external grants and sponsorships have become less reliable. Through joint discussions with the YMCA, as previously brought to council, and legal review, we've developed a modernized agreement that supports both operational stability and predictable annual budgeting. So, some key updates in the attached agreement that's before council tonight include a five-year term with an automatic renewal, which was similar to the existing agreement, updated insurance and reporting requirements, and most importantly, a static funding model of $80,000 per year, paid in two installments, one in March, one in August, with an optional $10,000 for extended services if requested by the town. This replaces the unpredictable yearly funding requests we've experienced, such as the additional funding required in 2025, and provides the YWCA with stability needed to hire staff and plan programs early. This agreement supports council's strategic goals by ensuring sustainable budgeting and maintaining important aquatic services to the community, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, council. Consul Chapman?
Through you, mayor, to Susie. I just want to be sure that if we're giving this amount of money, it says in here that if there is leftovers, that it will go into a reserve fund for future maintenance of the pool. So, the Y will still continue to apply for the grants that they usually do, and if they don't need the $80,000, then it goes towards maintenance.
Thank you, through you, your worship, to Consul Chapman, absolutely. So, part of the agreement is that the YWCA develops a restricted reserve only to be used for the Elmer Pool, and that's part of their reporting annually, too. So, you're right, if there's any surplus in a year, it would go directly to the reserve. That would help either offset their operational needs to deliver programming if wages or other material supplies costs increase, or to contribute to capital improvements.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution? And that is Carrie, thank you. Item 7.3, Manager of Parks and Recreation, resolution?
That report rec. 13-25, entitled Elmer Pool Capital Involvement Procurement be Received for Information, and that council approve single sourcing of the capital project as outlined in the report to Acapulco Pools.
Mover and seconder, Consul Chapman, Deputy Mayor Barber. Susie?
Thank you, through your worship, to members of council. This report before you this evening outlines the capital improvements required at the Elmer Pool, and recommends single sourcing of the project to Acapulco Pools. The 2023 condition assessment that was prepared for the pool identified several immediate and high priority deficiencies, that also inclusive of identifying aging and deteriorating deteriorated sand filters that are at their end of life, concrete deterioration in the pool basin, outdated or missing automatic chemical controls, need for a new PVC liner to restore water tightness in the basin, and also this presents an opportunity to install a pool heater to help extend the swim season. So, these issues directly impact water quality, safety, and regulatory compliance, and must be addressed before the next operating season. Acapulco Pools has provided a comprehensive integrated proposal that replaces a filtration system, installs automatic chemical controllers, repairs the concrete in the basin, those trouble spots that we have kind of patched and purged from year to year, but doing a real comprehensive repair, and installing a new 60-mill PVC liner, so a commercial-grade liner, and a commercial-grade heater, all which would be under one coordinated warranty. Because this work requires specialized sequencing and limited qualified contractors are available, particularly with a tight timeline, staff recommends single source procurement in accordance with the town's procurement policy. This project's included in the 2026 capital budget, and completing all upgrades as one project will improve safety, energy efficiency, reliability, and reduce future maintenance costs. I'm happy to answer any questions best I can.
Council? Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you. To Susie, the filtration and the heating capability, are all of the systems integrated?
Thank you, through your worship, to Deputy Mayor. Right now, the diving well and the lap pool, so the main basin, are integrated, so they're on one circulation system, and the baby pool's on its, on an independent system, which is great. So, in terms of a heater, the baby pool doesn't need to be heated, sunshine takes care of that, it gets nice and toasty in there. Then the heater can then just be installed to feed the lap pool and the diving well, if so desired. The filtration system's the same. The filtration system in the baby pool is operating fine, so we don't need to touch that. It would be really replacing the three existing end-of-life sanding gravel filters that support the main lap pool and the diving well.
Thank you. A follow-up, if I may. Once the heating system is in, has there been any consideration into a solar blanket?
Thank you, through you, your worship, through Deputy Mayor Barber. In my experience, there's been lots of different, unique opportunities attempted. It is a pretty, pretty big base, and the diving well certainly would be, there'd be more of an opportunity to not lose any of that heat in that depth of water. It's something we can certainly, certainly look into.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor? As Carrie, thank you. Item 7.4, Director of Infrastructure, Solid Waste Management, resolution?
That report operations 21-25, titled Updates to the Solid Waste Management Bylaw be Received for Information, and that council approve the proposed amendments to the Solid Waste Management Bylaw to align with current practices and proposed optimizations, and that staff present a finalized version of the Solid Waste Management Bylaw for adoption at a future meeting of council.
Mover and seconder, Consul Chapman, Consul Rahi. Carrie?
Thank you, through you, your worship. I'll try to keep these reports brief, as there's quite a few reports to go through in tonight's agenda. This report relates to an update to the Solid Waste Management Bylaw. The updates were essentially a large housekeeping cleanup of the previous bylaw to ensure that the revised captures current operational practices. Our Public Works Coordinator Leah put a lot of time and effort into making the new bylaw more user-friendly by reorganizing and categorizing into specific items or categories. Special waste programs were also added, such as the Large Item Collection and Curbside Swap Program. There's a lot of information provided in the report, and I don't have much further to add to it, so if there's any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Yes, Carrie, thank you. 7.5, Director of Infrastructure, Tender Award for South Street, resolution?
That report operations 22-25, entitled Tender Award for South Street Reconstruction be Received for Information, and that the tender submitted by PVX Construction Limited in the amount of $1,898,486.06 excluding HST be accepted, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the agreement with PVX Construction Limited, following the terms and conditions in the tender documents.
Mover and seconder, Consul DeRosie, Consul Chapman. Carrie?
Thank you, through you. This report relates to the tender award for the next full road reconstruction, which is South Street from Queen Street to Victoria, and Victoria Street from Elk Street to South Street. Public Information Center was held for the design, and the project has now been tendered. It was staff's goal to tender the project as early as possible and beat other municipalities out the door. There was 15 bids on the project, which is quite substantial for a project like this. There was one bid received with incorrect documents, which resulted in a bid disqualification. The lowest compliant bidder was PVX at $1.89 million. This is under the estimated amount for the project, and the town has worked with this contractor in the past. If approved, the project will commence in the spring of 2026. Again, this is a large-scale reconstruction project, was tendered early, and received very favorable results, and staff would recommend proceeding with the contract.
Thank you, council. Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you. Just a quick comment, and thank you to staff for getting it out and taking advantage of early bidding to get the best pricing.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor? As Carrie, thank you. Item 7.6, Director of Infrastructure, resolution?
That report operations 23-25, entitled Development Charges Water and Wastewater Rate Study be Received for Information, and that council approve the initiation of the Development Charges Study and Waste and Wastewater Rate Study funded from the Development Charges Water and Sewer Reserve Funds respectively, and that council approve the exemption from the Town of Elmer procurement bylaw to accept the proposals from Watson and Associates Economists, Economist Limited, and that council consider giving three readings to the bylaw authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute the proposals dated November 19th, 2025, from Watson and Associates Economists Limited.
Mover and seconder, Deputy Mayor Barber, Consul Ozlech. Carrie?
Thank you, through your worship. This report relates to the Development Charges and Water and Wastewater Rate Studies. These reports are due next year to support updated bylaws. The studies were included in the 2026 budget for completion. The Water and Wastewater Financial Plan is a requirement to renew out the town's drinking water license, which is due in May. Staff contacted Watson and Associates, who completed the previous studies and who we work with on a daily basis, on many of the changes to the D.C. Act that have occurred over the past couple of years. Watson's are a leader in the field, and there's value in retaining them, as they have a lot of previous information and background on the town. They also work with many of the municipalities in the area. They will be able to expedite the process and save us time and money. As you will see from the fees, they have essentially maintained the same fees from the previous studies, and the water rate study actually went down. Based on this, staff would recommend we proceed with Watson's for the studies to enable us to expedite the deliverables as quickly as possible.
Thank you, council. Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you. A quick question to Terry. The D.C. Act changes that the province has implemented, do we expect any negative impact from those changes?
That's a good question. That's hard to answer. I would say no, but they'll work with updating everything they need to with all the new regulations and acts that have come out over the past couple of years to update our bylaw, but I don't necessarily think there will be negatives.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie. Item 7.7, Director of Infrastructure, resolution?
That report operations 24-25, entitled Tender Award Five-Ton Truck with Snowplow Package be Received for Information, and that the tender submitted by Carrier Truck Centers in the amount of $337,234, or $234 excluding HST be accepted, and that council considers giving three readings to the respective bylaws 75-25 to authorize a signing of the goods and services agreement between the Town of Elmer and Carrier Truck Centers for the new trucks, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the agreement with Carrier Truck Centers, following the terms and conditions in the tender documents.
Thank you. Mover and seconder, Consul Ozlech, Consul Rahi. Carrie?
Thank you, through your worship. This report relates to the tender award for the new five-ton truck with snowplow package, and this is an important one, as we can all see the weather outside currently. This would replace our existing 2010 Peterbilt, which is number 23 in our fleet. This is a critical truck to the fleet, as it's one of two that has the salt and sand spreading capabilities in our fleet. This tender award is critical, as the current truck recently broke down this week and is continuing to see escalating maintenance costs. It highlights the importance of the revised town fleet and equipment maintenance policy, and the need to continue to replace our aging equipment. A detailed tender was posted and received two submissions. The tender was quite substantial, and had hundreds of different specifications that they needed to provide for the proposed equipment. Carrier Truck Center was the lowest bid for an international truck with Viking snow removal equipment. The critical item is the delivery date, which is the fourth quarter of 2026 for the carrier truck. The other had a later date of spring 2027. This truck is under budget, and staff would recommend proceeding with the purchase as soon as possible.
Thank you, council. Seeing none, all those in favor? As Carrie, thank you. 7.8, Director of Infrastructure, resolution?
That report operations 25-25, entitled Tender Award 2026 Pavement Management Program be Received for Information, and that the tender submitted by Associated Paving and Materials Limited in the amount of $275,795 excluding HST be accepted, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the agreement with Associated Paving and Materials Limited, following the terms and conditions in the tender documents.
Mover and seconder, Deputy Mayor Barber, Consul Chapman. Carrie?
Through your worship, this report relates to the tender award for the 2026 Pavement Management Program. The 2026 program is identified for Spruce Street East and West, so really the entire stretch of Spruce Street. The west section will see a mill and pave with crack sealing and curb repairs. The east section will see a full pulverization of the road with pavement of two new lifts of asphalt and shouldering and associated works. The tender saw a lot of interest with seven bidders and Associated Paving, with them being the lowest bidder. They are a large-scale paving company, and all references provided checked out. They do quite large-scale projects in the GTA, Hamilton areas, so there's no concerns with that. Staff would recommend proceeding with the contract with Associated Paving, and if there are any... and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you to Carrie. Spruce Street was one of the first streets that got the emulsion treatment. Did it give us the extra time we were hoping for?
Through your worship, to Deputy Mayor Barber, I think it did. It did work to seal some of the existing cracks. That's the main goal of that emulsion treatment, is to seal the cracks and try to keep water out of the base and to prevent some of the freeze-thaw damage that happens. So I think it did prolong it. This is much more substantial rehabilitation project, where we're going to be milling the top layer off, sealing the cracks with crack sealing process, and paving a new top lift. So this will really aim to link the assets underground with the pavement structure and give it a much better ride at this point. But to answer your question, I think it did extend it what it needed to up to this point, but we need to go to the next phase now on this.
Counsel.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment. It's nice to see this road being done. It is pretty rough. The only negative side of it is, is it is already like a second drag strip compared to Sparta. So hopefully, hopefully people do maybe slow down on it a wee bit, but it is nice to see it getting done. Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor. Carrie, thank you. Seven point nine, Sidewalk Program, Resolution.
That Report Operations twenty six dash twenty five, entitled Tender Award, Twenty Twenty-Six Sidewalk Program, John Street North, Be Received for Information, and that the tender submitted by 519 London Excavating Inc. in the amount of ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, excluding HST, be accepted, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the agreement with 519 London Excavating Inc., following the terms and conditions in the tender documents.
Mover and Secundar, Counselor Chapman, Deputy Mayor Barber. Carrie.
Through your worship, this, this report is for the tender award of the 2026 Sidewalk Program. The 2026 program is identified for the east side of John Street, from Walnut Street to Beach Street. So if you look at that aerial view there, the red denotes roughly where the new sidewalk will be. The missing link is ranked as one of the highest on the sidewalk warrant system, and it will link much of the residential area to businesses that are north of this location and within the project limits. Council can see the benefits of this program in recent years, and this design will follow the same objectives. There will be some tree removals required to incorporate the sidewalk. Unfortunately, there's no room to fit the sidewalk in front or behind the trees as they're running, they're, they're basically right in the middle of the running line of where the new sidewalk would have to go. All trees were removed. We'll see a tree replacement behind the sidewalk in a similar area with new trees. And we'd like to do that separate from the project, so that it's not a case of having the trees removed and have it sit for a long time with, with no trees in there. So we'd like the, the removals and the replacements to happen together, and then the sidewalk contract to follow in behind, if, if the weather permits. The project was tendered, and again, saw very significant interest. There were fifteen bidders, with the lowest being 519 London Excavating. Staff have not worked with this contractor, but did check all the references provided and asked for kind of a detailed scope and work breakdown to, to ensure that they had the resources to do this type of work. The contractor has experience working on municipal sidewalk projects, albeit they are smaller projects than this. The second bidder was Autoform, who completed our last sidewalk projects over the last couple of years. There's a fifteen percent difference in the submitted prices. Therefore, because the bonding and references all checked out, staff would recommend 519 Excavating to be approved for the project. If approved, the project will commence in the spring of 2026.
Thank you. Counsel? Counselor Rahi.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Carrie. Do we have to accept the lowest bidder? Just not using them before, but using Autoform, I think many a times over many of years. Is there, is there ever a time where you take not the lowest bidder, but just to get a contractor that does work that you've seen? Or is that not a thing that happens? Thank you.
Through your worship, to Counselor Rahi, it's an excellent question. It's why we immediately reached out for references on this. We don't necessarily need to take the lowest bidder. Generally, if, if they have provided all the information and references and we're satisfied with that, you would. But our tender documents and contracts do have different clauses and items in there that stipulate that we can not necessarily take the lowest bidder and elect to take the, the second bidder, or if there is any of those concerns. That is the reason why I'm highlighting that the second bidder was Autoform, but that being usually if it's over a ten percent difference, if the reference is checked out, staff would lean towards taking the low bidder, but it is council's discretion if they would like to elect to go with Autoform, seeing that they've completed various projects for us in the past and been very successful.
Deputy Mayor Barber.
Does the company have to post a bond for this type of work?
Through your worship, to Deputy Mayor Barber, yes, they do. And we checked all the bonding. They need to provide electrical, or electric bonding, so that we can verify that they're all legitimate and good, and it was all checked. The bonds are, are legitimate. They provided all the necessary bonding that they needed to.
Anything else from counsel? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution. And, Miss Carrie, thank you. Item seven ten, Appointment of the Auditor, Resolution.
That Report Finance twenty five dash twenty five, Respecting the Appointment of an Auditor for 2026, Be Received as Information, and that Council Direct Staff to Present a Bylaw Appointing Scrimger and Company CPA Professional Corporation as Municipal Auditors for the Town of Elmer for 2026.
Thank you. This time it's not Carrie. Heather.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just the standard Appointment of the Auditor Report that happens every year. So I did talk to Christine. She'll happily hold her rates similar to the past few years, and there will be some additional testing happening with all the new software that we've implemented and all the new integrations that we've implemented. So she's fine with all of that to hold their rates, just small inflationary increase for 2026.
Thank you. Counsel? Seeing none, all those in favor. Carrie. Seven point eleven. Did I miss one? Oh, did I get a, didn't I get a mover and secundar? That's very sharp. Let's do that again. I have a mover and secundar for this resolution. Counselor Chapman and Counselor Roselatch. Those, all those in favor again? And, Miss Carrie, thank you. Seven eleven. Lame Duck, Resolution.
That Report Clerk thirty-six dash twenty-five, Respecting the 2026 Municipal Election, Lame Duck Restricted Acts of Council, Preliminary Considerations Be Received as Information, and that Council Direct Staff to Present the Attached Bylaw at a Future Meeting of Council for Adoption, Delegating Authority to Staff During Any Restricted Acts Period Pursuant to Section 2175 of the Municipal Act 2001.
Mover and Secundar, Counselor Chapman, Deputy Mayor Barber. And who's doing that one?
So to counsel, the restricted acts period, it's often referred to as the lame duck period. It's a time during the election year when counsel can temporarily lose, temporarily lose some of its decision-making powers, and this can happen if fewer than three-quarters of the current members of counsel will not be returning following the election. And this can happen at two different times. First, August twenty-first, 2026, which is nomination day, or October twenty-sixth, 2026, which is election day, if it occurs at all. This report outlines the delegation that counsel, the previous term of counsel issued to the CIO as well as the Director of Operations and the clerk. To review some of the delegations, it's finance, financial signing authority for expenditures outside the budget up to and exceeding fifty thousand dollars, disposition of any real property or personal property of the municipality, which has a value up to and exceeding fifty thousand dollars at the time of disposal, authority to hire or remove any officer from or to employment with the Town of Elmer, as well as authority to bind the corporations for funding and new project opportunities. These delegations were previously issued in 2022, and this update to the bylaw is going to bring it into compliance with our new comprehensive delegation of authority bylaw. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. Quick question to all, and you mentioned property of fifty thousand dollars or more. If a sale for a lot in the industrial park came up in that period, can we sell it?
Yes. That authority would be delegated to the CIO, and I should also mention there is a reporting requirement, which is integrated into this bylaw. So the CIO would be bringing back a report to the new term of counsel about the ways in which this delegated authority was used during the restricted acts period.
Counselor Rahi.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. This has me a little confused. So if we go into the lame duck, I don't need to come anymore? Is that what this is basically saying?
You would be a dead duck.
Well, if, if we do it, it doesn't really make any sense, because there's no point of us meeting here if we can't really decide anything. So.
There will be items to decide, except we can't decide monetary items. Wanted to make comment?
No, through you. There, there's still a lot of planning application items, too, that, that counsel will deal with, even if they, they can't deal with those large items. And I recall the last report, I think it was only three, three or four items, I forget, but they were relatively minor items. But it's just to ensure that business doesn't grind to a halt, essentially.
Besides, it's a good group to come to, to talk things over. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor. Yes, Carrie, thank you. So where am I now? Seven twelve, right? CIO Group Benefits Pool, Resolution.
That Report CIO forty-seven dash twenty-five, Respecting Group Benefits Pool, Be Received as Information.
Mover and Secundar, Counselor Rahi, Counselor Chapman. And Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is primarily for information for counsel about the ongoing process that we've been working through with the CAOs in the county on the benefits consortium model. I believe Elmer, along with Bayham and Malahide, are going to continue on with Mozy and Mozy. Central Elgin is, hasn't made a final decision now, and in some, in the west, might go with the, the new county's new provider. It won't impact our rates substantially, because staying, we're going to look at it potentially of an increase of under ten thousand dollars. Mozy and Mozy is going to go out to do a market review assessment next year. So we're going to keep on watching this and seeing where to best position ourselves and try to, try to get the best deal. Either way, nobody's going to turn us away from having us added to their consortium. So we, we have options, and we're just kind of playing the field for the next year to see how this plays out. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions of counsel.
Thank you. Counsel? Seeing none, all those in favor. Carrie, thank you. Seven point one four, CIO Complex Board Request, Resolution. Did I miss one? Seven thirteen, let's, let's do that one first. Representation on the Elmer Secondary Water Board. Mover and Resolution.
That Report CIO forty-eight dash twenty-five, Respecting Representation, Elmer Area Secondary Water Board, Be Received for Information.
Mover and Secundar, Counselor Roselatch, Counselor Rahi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So very briefly, there was a requirement for staff to report back on this issue. This didn't occur immediately, as there are other items of negotiation ongoing between both municipal partners that were of somewhat more importance. But given the emergence of the, the large Yarmouth Yards issue facing the primary board, it's important for the town to shelve this issue for a little while. We don't want to confuse other levels of government by raising this at this juncture and advocating on it. So this is just to keep counsel updated, that we have not forgotten about it, the, the issue of representation on the secondary board. It's just a lower priority right now, and really can wait until that larger issue facing the primary board is addressed. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions of counsel.
Counsel? Seeing none, all those in favor. Yes, Carrie, thank you. And now, seven point one four, the board, Complex Board Request, Resolution.
That Report CIO forty-nine dash twenty-five, EEECC Board Request to Fund Analysis, Be Received as Information, and that Council Endors Providing Up to Five Thousand Dollars Plus HST in Funding Towards the EEECC Project.
Mover and Secundar, Counselor DeRosia, Counselor Rahi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, very briefly, as you heard at last week's EEECC meeting, the work to undertake a Class D estimate at the EEECC is already proceeding. The issue before counsel is whether to fund fifty percent of this work. Staff are recommending you do as a good-faith gesture to our, our partner in the EEECC, as well as the county, which requested this in a delegation at that board. This is a relatively small amount. It doesn't commit counsel to fund anything further in the future. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions of counsel.
Counsel? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. I'm struggling with this. On one side, I support the development of the expansion of the, of the library downtown. And on the other side, I would like to, good faith, support of our partner at the complex. And at this particular time, I still don't know which way to go on this matter.
Anyone else? Counselor Chapman.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with Pete. I do not want the library to go to the complex. However, we are shared ownership of the complex, and this is a matter for the complex, of the complex board, which we are a half of. So I regrettably would say yes.
Anyone else? I, too, are caught between a rock and a hard place, kind of, you know? But I think it's important that, you know, we show good faith to the complex and to the county. It's been a, you know, been a process, and we're part of that process. And I think showing good faith can be returned on the other side as well at some point. And I will vote yes. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor. And opposed? And, Miss Carrie. New Business and Matters of Urgency. Seeing none, Reading of Bylaws. Sure you won't do that.
That Council Gives Three Readings To and Approves. Bylaw seventy-two dash twenty-five, Being a Bylaw to Establish Fees and Charges for the Corporation of the Town of Elmer. Bylaw seventy-three dash twenty-five, Being a Bylaw to Confirm the Proceedings of Counsel at the Regular Counsel Meeting Held on November nineteenth, 2025. Bylaw seventy-four dash twenty-five, Being a Bylaw to Authorize the Signing of an Agreement Between the Corporation of the Town of Elmer and PVX Construction Limited for the Reconstruction of South Street. Bylaw seventy-five dash twenty-five, Being a Bylaw to Authorize the Signing of an Agreement Between the Corporation of the Town of Elmer and Carrier Truck Centers for the Provision of a Five-Ton Truck with Snowplow Package. Bylaw seventy-seven dash twenty-five, Being a Bylaw to Authorize the Signing of an Agreement Between the Corporation of the Town of Elmer and Watson and Associates Economists Limited for a Development Charges Study and a Water and Wastewater Rates Study. Bylaw seventy-eight dash twenty-five, Being a Bylaw to Authorize the Signing of an Agreement Between the Corporation of the Town of Elmer and 519 London Excavating Incorporated for the Twenty Twenty-Six Sidewalk Program. And Bylaw seventy-nine dash twenty-five, Being a Bylaw to Authorize the Signing of an Agreement Between the Corporation of the Town of Elmer and Associated Paving and Materials Limited for the Twenty Twenty-Six Pavement Management Program.
Mover and Secundar, Deputy Mayor Barber, Counselor DeRozio is here. Any questions, comments from counsel? Seeing none, all those in favor. And Carrie. Are there any inquiries by members? Counselor Chapman.
Thank you, worship. I have a question for Heather. I understand that the water and wastewater capital expenditures will be funded by user fees. Could you explain the unfunded capital projects and how they become funded? Could you explain the unfunded capital projects and how they become funded in the future?
That's a great question, through the mayor to Counselor Chapman. As you know, the water and wastewater are funded through the user rate studies, so as new capital comes in, we'll put those amounts through the capital model. With the user rate studies, those will be funded through water and wastewater reserves. So if you look at, for example, in two thousand twenty-six, some of the budget documents for two thousand twenty-six, we had an unfunded amount for E E C C capital. So until the board determined what they wanted us to fund, it's, it's sat there as unfunded. So I'll bring a, a resolution back to council to say now that the board has determined the capital funding, council's determined that they want to fund these projects, I'll come back with a resolution to, to move it from unfunded to funded through asset management. So if you look further out, you know, into two thousand twenty-eight, and you're saying, okay, well, water and wastewater sewer, you know, are all, all funded, but there's roads components that aren't funded. We don't know past two thousand twenty-eight about OSIF funding, which currently we've been using to fund our roads portion. So every road, a portion of it's funded by water. Wastewater, if we're doing a full road reconstruction, the majority of the time the, the road itself is funded through OSIF, and we don't know that funding right now. So until we know that funding, it's going to sit as an unfunded project until we know the funding, and then we'll move it to funded based on obligatory reserves or asset management reserve. So we use the word unfunded, basically saying we don't know how we're going to fund it yet. We know we have to fund it. It could be through debt. It could be through grants. Elk Street sat unfunded for a couple of years. We had the water and wastewater in reserves, but we didn't have the road component. Then all of a sudden, OSIF came back and they said, we're going to double your funding. So that pulled the project up and became funded. So it's just the terminology that we have in this plan. It's nothing to be alarmed about at this point, and we fund things just like we fund in our own household, right? We know we need a new roof in five years from now. Part of it's going to be unfunded because who has twenty thousand dollars in their bank account to do a new roof? But we're, we're trying to save towards that, and we need to get a plan together for those unfunded items.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Okay, thank you. Any other inquiries? Seeing none, statements and committee reports from council? Counselor Ozilas?
Mr. Mayor, the Royal Canadian Legion Branch eighty-one Elmer was founded in nineteen twenty-six. Their branch will, will be celebrating our hundredth birthday in two thousand twenty-six. They kick, the kickoff, the anniversary is a winning cheese party on Friday night, the December, the fifth at seven P M. All council members and staff are invited. The note tickets are required, required, and the wine and cheese is free. The buy is cash only, and address code is in effect.
Okay, thank you. Any other statements, committee report? Seeing none, reported the mayor. I really don't have a lot to report, except that, I guess, thanks to the persistence of the treasurer, who chased IMPACT for a long time to get the assessments in for this year. IMPACT, that is the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation, came down just yesterday or the day before, something like that. Can you hear, not hear me? I'm just talking about IMPACT, the municipal partner, the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation. Assessments came to, were issued, I guess, yesterday or the day before, and there's slightly more than we anticipated in terms of assessments. So that means that the tax rate for the budget is now at two point six two percent for next year. That's the tax rate, not the delivery rate, the tax rate. So that's good news, it brought it down, you know, point three percent. So, so that's what it will be in terms of the budget. So thank you, Heather, and thank, and thank IMPACT, I guess, as well for coming through with the assessments. I hope they will be as quick next year. All right. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none? There's no meeting closed to the public. We have a resolution to adjourn.
That council do now adjourn at seven fifty-three P M.
Mover and secondor, Counselor DeRosia and Counselor Chapman. All those in favor? And it's not, as Carrie.